Lord, I help the city to continue to prosper, provide an abundance of services and opportunities to all our residents. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Amelia. All right. I'd like to again welcome you to tonight's regular meeting, the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. We do have, uh, we do have large print agendas. Colby's got them there. If that would be beneficial to anyone, feel free to get one. So next, I believe I will ask our, well, we don't have Denise here tonight.
A sub.
Yeah. Thank you, Debbie Pounders, for sitting in for Denise, and go ahead and call the roll.
Mayor Doug Spross.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Yes.
Jeff Watson.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fuggerus.
Here.
Ernest Kate.
Here.
All right, thank you. And you're proud of yourself because you said Fuggerus, right? I can tell.
I guess. I just want to call you Mark.
All right. We're at item five on the agenda. This is the agenda item that's on each council agenda that council sets aside for brief comments from our citizens. If we have any residents that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to go to the podium at this time. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item six. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over the minutes. If there are no changes or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
Okay, who's, who's, who moved it?
Randall made the motion, and Amelia seconded.
Okay, thank you. Oh, do I call them in?
Oh, never mind.
This is a voice vote, isn't it?
I was just trying to throw you.
You did.
Yeah. We have a motion to second, sorry about that. I've only done this for 14 years. We have a motion to second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item seven is procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
I move for A and B.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus.
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item eight, Police and Fire Committee Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, mayor. I was not able to be here during the committee meeting that night, and I think Councilman Lawson took that for me.
Okay.
I did. We had one item before us that night. It was recommended for approval. I'll go ahead and read it. It's a resolution amending the 2022 budget for the city of Springdale Fire Department. And I believe Chief Holt's up there, but I think it's just amending some, moving some money for some vehicles. You can elaborate.
Yeah, the, uh, money that we received due to insurance claims goes into a city account that we're not able to expend from, and so we're asking that, uh, the balance of that fund be moved to or appropriated to our vehicle maintenance account that we can expend funds from.
Move, Larry, resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item nine, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
Okay, let's see if I can get all this stuff together here. Uh, the first item is a final plat for Collins Cove subdivision. Planning Commission reviewed this, uh, final plat and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, an ordinance accepting the final plat of Collins Cove subdivision in the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. Should be noted that part of this is in Elm Springs. We're only plating the portion that's in Springdale.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Are there any other questions or comments? Council? Anyone in the room?
So I'll ask, how does that work? Is there some sort of cooperation agreement on maintenance when the portion of subdivisions in Springdale, a portion of it's in a different city?
Well, basically, the city, each city is responsible for their own maintenance. I would imagine that the two cities could work together to make sure it's done at the same time, or, you know, when it needs to be done. Water and sewer is all handled through Springdale Water, so all of that's the same. You can see the red line that's on that plat shows the difference between the two. It does hit pretty much on a lot line, so we don't have that problem to deal with. So we, creates a problem if your house is on two sides.
We have a similar situation on a, is it Saddle? Saddle Ridge?
Yeah, we have.
Out off of 56th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, this is where that is, and we have a couple of them up in that area. We've done this before. It hasn't created a problem up to this point.
What about for police and fire?
Well.
Responses?
I guess the chief will have to address that. I mean, it's the people who live in Elm Springs that have the biggest problem because they gotta come all the way around and to get to those. I mean, I can't, I can't answer that.
Yeah, I know, that's not your deal. I just wondered how we, how we deal with that.
Also, uh, I know that trash, you know.
Yeah, trash pickup is a difference.
Trash pickup is different for a few houses. But that just is what it is, I guess.
That's just those people's problem.
Right.
Right. You know which city you're buying into when you buy a lot out there.
Any other questions? All right.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus. Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Move mercy clause be adopted.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry about that. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry seven zero.
All right, thank you.
The next request is to rezone property located at 2815 North 56th Street and 5531 West County Line Road. The request is to rezone the property from Agricultural District A1 to low-medium density, single-family residential district SF2. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to low-medium-density, single-family residential district SF2 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Anyone?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Move mercy clause be adopted.
Second.
Who's second?
Randall.
Okay. All right. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry seven zero.
And I forgot to mention that they have emergency clauses because there's actions pending on these of these. The next request is for a conditional use for a use unit, uh, 42, a church synagogue to be located at 1396 and 1404 Chester Avenue. There has been a church at this location for several many years. This is just taking it to a different church organization to have at the same location. We do have the, uh, uh, signed parking agreements for off-site parking for each of those, the same as they were for the previous one. Planning Commission recommends approval of the condition use. The title of the resolution reads, a resolution approving a conditional use at 1396 and 1404 Chester Avenue is set forth in ordinance number 4030, and the only conditions and are included is that they have to meet the sound ordinance, meet building and fire code requirements.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments?
So this was a church, and now it's gonna be a different church. And so as a result of it being a different church, we have to do a new conditional use? Is that?
A conditional use is granted to a applicant at a location, and it's neither one of them transferable, and this is the same location, just a different church body. And that's why we're doing a new one.
And it seemed like, maybe I'm mixed up on location, but it seemed like when we did this one before, there was some question about parking, but apparently there hadn't been any problems?
Not that we're aware of. We have signed parking agreements with the bank and with the properties in the neighborhood. They, we haven't had any problems with parking that we were made aware of, and there was no comments at the planning commission meeting about parking issues.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Carry seven zero.
The next item is a request for a waiver of street improvements, drainage curb gutters and sidewalks, in particular a sidewalk in connection with a single-family home being built at 8080 West Wagon Wheel Road. As you can see, this is the location. This is what the property looks like. There's not any sidewalks or curb and gutters in that area. Planning Commission recommends approval of the waiver request with option number one. Title of the resolution reads, a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Jeremy and Kendra Williams in connection with 8080 West Wagon Wheel Road, a single-family dwelling.
Move the resolution pass with option one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with option one. Any other questions? Anyone in the room? All right.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman. Fuggerus.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
Okay, next item, number 10, Finance Committee and Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Okay, thank you. We had several resolutions that came before the Finance Committee. First one has to do with the execution of an amendment to a design contract for Dean's Trail. And I'll read the title to the resolution. A resolution authorizing the execution of amendment number three to a design contract for Dean's Trail. Is anyone gonna speak on this one?
Mike is here. Mike, this, basically, it amends the contract to include, uh, the next section that we're gonna do, right? Designed for the next section.
Amends the contract with?
With?
Right. This resolution was, uh, forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
I make the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions?
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
So, Mike, if you stay there, the last item had to do with Dean's Trail, which is on the east side of the trail system. And the next item, next resolution, has to do with the extension of the trail on the west side of town, Spring Creek Trail. I'll read the title of this resolution. A resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services contract for an extension of Spring Creek Trail. This resolution was also forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. Briefly, could you tell us what we're doing here, Mike?
So this is going to, uh, it's for the design of the trail to extend from, uh, the, where it currently ends at Game and Fish, under Interstate 49 to Whittle Road. It's the next phase of the trail. Eventually, they'll, it'll extend over to Shaw Park.
I move the resolution pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions?
Are these, are these expenses, they come out of turnback or?
Yes, they come out of our trail.
The money's in the, uh, the street fund, but it did come out of turnback, yes.
All right.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
And, uh, Mike Peters and I, I asked Mike to come next, it's okay, buddy. I asked you to come at the next committee meeting and give us an update, a better update. We, Colby was able to answer some questions during the committee about the money in that fund and what we have available for trails right now, as it sits today. And we'll get a good update next, uh, next committee meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Third item from the Finance Committee had to do with a contract for architect services for the proposed new senior center. Title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for architect services. And this resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
I had a question that I brought to Colby's attention earlier, and in case anybody else had the same question. I wanted to make sure that even if with inflation and the cost of, of building, the structure increases, that the, um, $660,000 architect fee would not increase unless we needed them to, uh, do any more architectural services. And also that they were, um, doing the maintenance inspections and things like that is all included in these fees, and it is. Is that correct?
Yeah, the inflation shouldn't affect the architectural work on this project. This is a locked-in price of $660,000, which is 6% of the $11 million estimate.
So they just go on the estimate and they lock in that price?
But now, when we go to construction, we're gonna wanna lock in that price and do a price not to exceed. We run into that whenever we have engineering on projects. If something changes, they have to go back and do, uh, like if they run into a water line or something, then they have to go back. But we've been locking in our contracts with price not to exceed on those. But this is an agreed-upon amount for this architectural work, and they should be done in about three months on it. But we will get a price not to exceed when we go to construction.
Right.
Now, if we go, if we decide, you know, in two months, we wanna make a lot of changes to this, that is gonna be on us.
Any other questions?
So how's in this, in this design, have we gotten, uh, how's our feedback been on this design?
It's been good. Dusty Graham has been the lead architect on this. He's been meeting with Lori from the senior center. I think we've had about four meetings where she gave him what she needs in this new facility. He came, he came with an initial drawing, but she had made several changes to it, and I think we've about got it to where she wants it to be. And I think you all have a copy of the design. So he's been really good to work with. We've had several meetings with him.
He really did. What you have now is just some elevations and some floor plan, basic floor plans. And he sort of did that on the, betting on the come.
Yep.
And, uh, and, and this, this would get us buildable drawings.
Is there a timeframe?
He estimates it to be about three months. And we, you know, this is gonna be a while before we build this. It's probably gonna be in the next bond. And, um, so we'll, we just wanna be shovel-ready on this. We've already been acquiring the properties, as y'all know, over by the Jones Center. So we just wanna be ready to start turning dirt whenever we pass the next bond.
This allows us to have good drawings and, uh, as good an estimate as we can have before we ask the people of Springdale to approve the bonds for it.
I recommend we move the resolution forward.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone?
Are we, do we have any more land to acquire?
We have acquired all the property, except there were some parcels of the Jones Center acquired. And we still need to work out with them. There's some of that they need to use, and some we can use as part of our parking and everything for the senior center. So we haven't gotten that all worked out yet about how. So we will come to you to reimburse, and they've acquired those. So we will come to you with some price to, uh, reimburse the Jones Center for the portion we're gonna use.
Okay.
Okay. But the rest we've acquired. All right? Okay?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
Item, item number 10D is, uh, has to do with the repairs to the railroad crossing on Mountain Road, similar to the repairs that we made on Huntsville Avenue in agreement with the railroad. The title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing funding for repairs, improvements to the Mountain Road Railroad Crossing pursuant to an addendum to a railroad crossing easement agreement with the Arkansas Missouri Railroad Company, AMRR. This resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
I have a question on, I see that in some of the things that we're using, it's talking about switch ties. And I know, is it gonna be laid out the way it is right now? Do you know, with the ties on the road over the railroad tracks? Is that what we're talking about?
No, they have concrete panels to replace those.
Okay, so we're not replacing, we're not going back how it is right now?
Correct. It'll be like council.
Okay.
I make the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, Debbie?
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
Item number 10E has to do with repairs to, uh, the Sanders Trailhead and Lake Springdale Trailhead that were damaged by the flooding that we had some months ago. And we had asked, uh, James to take a look at the possibility of repairs with blacktop asphalt as compared to concrete. And as my understanding, that came in a better, uh, bid, going with concrete at 239, 912, 98 for both of those trailshead repairs. The title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for the Sanders Trailhead and Lake Springdale Trailhead repair projects. And this resolution was forwarded from the committee with recommendation for approval.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. As Jeff was saying, this, you know, we were, we were gonna get a price on both, expecting the concrete to be substantially more. But we wanted y'all to have prices on both because we've replaced that. This will be the second time we've had to repair or replace the asphalt. So we were all buckled in and wondering, well, how much more do we wanna spend on concrete? And it turned out concrete came in less. So it was a, that was a real pleasant surprise, so. Any other comments or questions? All right, Debbie?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
So the agenda refers to item 10F as a resolution, but in the, in our notepads, it shows the title to it as being an ordinance. I assume it is an ordinance.
Should be.
Uh, this is an ordinance in regards to an amendment to an intermeniscal sewer agreement between Lowell and Springdale, and this ordinance was also, uh, forwarded from the committee with recommendation for approval. The title to this ordinance is an ordinance confirming a second amendment to an intermeniscal sewer agreement between the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the city of Lowell, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency.
So on the?
Can you talk about it, Colby?
I'm sorry.
Do you wanna talk about this at all?
Sure. Is there any specific questions we have?
My, I've got a question on the payment. We, we originally talked about 2 million, and then we go to 997, 140. Is that because of the percentage of flow that we're allowing?
Yeah, that's because we reduced the request. So it, it's still comparable to, in, as far as per gallons per minute, it's, it's comparable to that same rate. It's just that we've asked for such a substantially less amount of gallons per minute that that's what it equates to.
I'd just like to say, I'm astounded at the fact, not only do we not have lift stations on the east side of town to take care of our Springdale citizens, but we don't even have a force main that can take care of it. Yet we have plenty of planning and capacity to take care of, uh, of Lowell and their needs. And it, for anyone living on the east side, it's no wonder, when you live there, that you feel like the redheaded stepchild at the family reunion.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
I won't get off. There we go. All right, uh, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Are there other questions or comments? All right, hearing none? Roll call.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus.
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
No.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Carries five two, does have an emergency clause?
Move mercy clause, Bill?
No.
Second.
Okay, where am I gonna put that, I'll, I'll figure it out, let's see. We'll put this as an emergency.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is on ten F, right? Okay. Okay, Fujerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
No.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Mercy clause carries six one.
All right, thank you, we're at item eleven, Parks and Rec Committee and Chairman Mike Lawson, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, we met last week, we had two items before us, both of them were resolutions, both of them were recommended for approval. Uh, I'll go ahead and read the first one and I'll turn it over to Mike Peters. Uh, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk of the city of Springdale to accept a quick claim of land from the Bentonville Belavesta Trailblazers Association, DBA, NWA, Trailblazers. Now, like I said, it was recommended for approval and I'll let Mike speak more on that.
So the, the Trailblazers came in and built this trail, uh, hard surface trail, trying to connect the Jones Center to Fitzgerald mountain, mountain bike trails. And, uh, we have two parcels of land left that the city needs to acquire, uh, for them to completely turn a trail over to us.
Didn't we originally have turned this over to them so they could build the trail?
Not that I'm aware of, do you have historical knowledge on that?
We did.
We did.
Was it part of Public Sales Board land, Patsy?
It was there around-
Yeah.
Not, not this portion, this is a lot they actually acquired in a subdivision. There's some additional easement they had to acquire to connect the trail together.
Okay.
But they acquired it, built the trail, and now they're giving it to us. Right, they're giving, we never had it to start with, now they acquired it themselves, and now they're giving it to us. Right.
Right?
Right. At, but we got it all built and acquired at no cost.
Long as we keep an eye on the graffiti.
Motion and second to approve the resolution, any other questions or comments? Anybody in the audience? Okay, Debbie.
Fujerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Carry seven zero.
The second resolution was, uh, recommended for approval as well, it was basically just a operations and management agreement amongst the cities that we would maintain, I believe the Greenway basically the same way, um, and all be under the same guidelines. Uh, I'll go ahead and read it, and if you've got questions, I'll turn it over to Mike. A resolution approving the updated operations and management plan for the Northwest Arkansas Razorback Greenway.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second to approve the resolution, any other questions or comments?
So each city is required to maintain their section of the trail individually. These are just standards laid out so that the trail is consistently maintained and then really, you know, but our Parks and Rec, uh, does the, the majority of the maintenance, they do a great job. This doesn't change anything they do, any major big, uh, things that they can't handle parks or, uh, public work steps in and takes care of it.
So, will they be like numbering the mile signs again, I know a lot of those have fallen over and maybe even changed, some of the miles have changed.
I think they're getting completely redone.
Uh, chairs the committee that's doing that right now.
Yeah.
We are in the process of, of renumbering, it's gonna be a forty, forty mile trail, cause now it starts, starts at Kessler. Uh, hopefully within the next two weeks, the existing mile markers will be replaced, or actually they're gonna be scanned with a new cover. Um, each of the cities have their own color, so when you're going down the Greenway, when you get to red, you know you're in Springdale, all the way through Springdale, it's red. All of them will have new markers, we're going with a updated marketing scheme and all of that's going to be rolled out within the next couple of years, so, yes. It is kinda hard, and, and the, the markers on the pavement themselves will all be taken off and new ones put on there too.
Any other questions? Is that a motion? Or you got a question?
I motioned.
Oh, did you, okay, okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fujerus?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, item twelve is our community development block grant program, I asked that we put this on there, we, right now, we currently don't have a CDBDG chairman, uh, I thought you might wanna remedy that whenever it's decided about, uh, uh, an item later about our open council seat, cause Kevin was chairman. But, uh, had a discussion with Mike Lawson this morning, or, or, before the meeting, and he, uh, he agreed to go ahead and take this item.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll, uh, I'll go ahead and read it and then I'll turn it to Dean or Patsy or whichever one's gonna speak on it. A resolution adopting and approving the action plan for the COVID nineteen funds reallocation. And I'll turn it to Dean to explain.
Council, Mayor, um, we are the only city in Northwest Arkansas that actually got reallocation funds because we were able to spend all of that money we had for COVID nineteen. So, just a brief overview of what happened. August nineteenth, twenty twenty, we got our first CARES Act for four seventy-eight, we awarded twelve nonprofits. And this is who we, this is who we allotted funds to to help out, I'm not gonna read them all. February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, we got our third round, this is CV three. CV two, we got nothing, so this is CV three, we got four hundred and forty-five thousand, we awarded seven nonprofits. And this is who we funded. I'm going too fast, just let me know.
What's the red?
The red is, um, eighty-eight thousand went to CV one. So Returning Home got five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-three for CV three. They also got eighty-eight thousand for CV for the first COVID nineteen funding. Community clinic, the same thing, they got twenty-one thousand for the CV three funds. The CV one, they got sixty-seven thousand.
So none of the, on this list, if you leave that list up there, none of the rest of these received funding the, of the, in the first round?
Correct.
Okay.
Just two of them, Returning Home and Community Clinic, we got funding twice.
Okay, thank you.
So as of right now, this is what it looked like from CV one and CV three, this is who we funded.
And just so, I know the council knows this, but just so everybody's straight on it, these, this CV, uh, CDBG money is restricted to COVID helping nonprofits a, address the pandemic.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's not like our regular annual fund that we
Correct.
spend the majority of that out into housing rehab, right?
So HUD looked at it as this is their tieback to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. So you gotta justify the funds that we give you, you have to justify that tieback. If you can't justify that, you can't use the money for that. So if you can justify it, you can use it. May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, since we are the only city Northwest Arkansas to expend all nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, HUD decided to award us with a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. So-
Hundred seventy-eight, six thirty-two?
Hundred seventy-eight, yeah. And, so what I did was, for one month, I put out basically a recommendation from all the nonprofits to give me what they would like to have for funding to help them out during this pandemic. And through that, we had nine applications, and it came up to two hundred and forty-five thousand.
So what are you wanting to do?
So in doing that, there's, so as you can see, here's the nonprofits for the, I call it the CVR funds. So as you can see, Feed four seven nine, this is the first time, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but you can kinda see who's getting funding. So, one of the recommendations, one of the recommendations is to equally split the hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars the, um, nine ways. In the nine ways, and give everyone equal amount of money. That's one way, I'm just-
Do we know all about these nine nonprofits, I mean, have we received resumes from them?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I have, I have them all right here, and we have funded all of these prior.
Like, EPIKOS, Senator, I'm not familiar with that.
EPIKOS, basically, they are, they deal with, um, adoption and child crisis. So they're-
Have we funded them before?
Yes, sir. Everyone here, we have funded, um, Feed four seven nine, we have funded through our usual, our fiscal year funding.
They, they're part of that eleven, twelve, thirteen percent
Correct.
that we've done out of our normal CDBG, okay?
When I say the first time, I mean the CV funds. But everyone here, I have, we have funded before, and we have went through their audit process to make sure that they are good standing with the city.
So, you've just thrown out one option to just
Correct.
divide the one seventy-eight, six thirty-two, nine ways?
Correct.
And everybody gets the same?
Correct.
I don't know about each of the nonprofits, how that works for them, did you look at the possibility of taking what they've asked for and reducing each one an amount that would, uh, that's, that's a, that's where they're all taking the same, the same hit from what they've asked for, but they're not all necessarily getting the same amount. Some have asked for much more than others, and is that
Right.
is that doable?
That's, that's doable.
That is doable.
To allocate it out based on what their original request, what percentage was, and, and take that percentage down instead of just a flat amount for everybody.
That'd be my recommendation.
Yeah, cause if you do, everybody just the same amount, some people are getting more than they've asked for.
Right.
Yeah.
We, we wouldn't give somebody more than they asked for, we would, we reduce them all down by the percentage of what they ask so that everybody takes the same percentage of that.
That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
Okay. Is that what this is, right here in front of us? Is that kinda what that is?
Correct, I'm sorry.
And that's what they have for-
Oh, that is what that is.
No, that's what they've asked for and what they've received in the past, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So what they asked for is
Yeah.
Correct, that's the total amount of what they asked for.
Just reducing it down, one seventy-eight, six thirty-two.
Correct.
In the same-
In the same proportion as to what they've asked for.
Correct, I'll second that.
Okay.
Can, can you refresh my memory what ACOM is?
Arkansas Coalition of Marshallese. Basically, they, it's a huge marshallese, um, community here, and they basically take care of, like, rental, housing, um, food and securities, utility compensation, you know, medical, travel, whatever they need.
And what about Root Head NWA?
That is a Latino, um, that's, that's some Janus', um, organization, they take care of the Latino community.
So, I guess, how do we know? For example, that ACOM needs more than Community Clinic?
So what I'll do is I'll call them and basically have a discussion and find out what, how low they can go, basically, and just have a good discussion and find out what we can and can't do. And I'll just have the discussion with all of them.
I mean, they have to know that they can provide services for a certain amount of money, so they come to us and say, if you give us this amount of money, we can provide these kind of services. We, the, the list of what you can and can't do has already been provided to them, just like we do every time, it's no different. And we've done this time than we have in any of their processes before, and then they have to be honest to make sure the money is being spent the way they said they were going to, and then HUD will come in and monitor it as well, so we, they all are very well aware of the process they have to go through.
And being this the third time-
It seems to me like it'd be to their advantage to ask for as much as possible next time, and hope it gets reduced by the same amount as everybody else's.
I'm not, not gonna say that they don't do that, but they gotta know they have to be able to use that amount. I don't think they're gonna come in and ask for three times more than what they think they can use. From my understanding, there's not an organization here that couldn't use more money.
And that's why I wonder why some of them maybe did not ask for more.
They have, I've had a couple that asked me, um, one organization asked for sixty thousand dollars. And another organization says, hey, I would like some funding, so we, we talked back and forth, and one of the organizations dropped their funding, so the other organization could get some money.
This is a pretty-
It has happened.
This group works together pretty well, I mean, you know, the money's not endless, and if everybody gets a piece of it, we're talking about helping mo, quite a broad range of the residents of Springdale, because we spread it out. I mean, we could've just done this on first come, first served and said, whoever's the first in, they came in for sixty thousand, and we just, it's a lot easier to do it that way, we don't necessarily get as many people served if we do that, and that's why we went this route to let those organizations who had provided direct assistance to come to the city and say, this is what I, I think I can use.
Did we get a second? We did get a second, okay. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Debbie?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fujerus? Powell?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you all, and thank you for being here, I know we have several of those groups, uh, represented here and and appreciate what you do in our community, thank you. Item thirteen, I'm gonna turn over to our city attorney.
Thank you, this is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, uh, property located at four zero zero three Dixon Avenue.
Move ordinance pass. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance, any other comments, is there, is there anyone in the room that needs to speak uh, to this location? All right, seeing none, last for the vote.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fujerus?
Yes.
It does have an emergency clause, but-
Move mercy clause, Bill?
Second.
Okay. Who did, who did the emergency clause?
Me.
Well, y'all are just, don't figure it out. Denise can figure it out. Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fujerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
All right, our next item is number fourteen, um, and I'll turn that over to Colby to kinda set it real quick.
Council members, because of the vacancy on our city council, Arkansas code requires, since there is uh, more than a year left on the, uh, unexpired term, that the council has two options, uh, we can either appoint someone to fill the vacancy, or we can, uh, have a special election. The nearest, uh, the closest date we could have a special election would be in February. Um, we do have a resolution prepared that we can fill a name in, if you choose to, uh, select a name this evening, uh, we can go ahead and appoint that person, uh, by resolution, we can fill that out for you, but, uh, it goes up to the city council, it's your pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion that the council adjourn, uh, the meeting and go into executive session for purposes of discussing how best to, uh, fill the current vacancy on the city council.
Okay, we have a motion, second, and a second to go into executive session, uh, roll. Go ahead.
Could Ernest just talk to us and explain that real quick before we go on it?
Sure.
Explain which part?
Well, explain that we can do what Mike is suggesting in his motion.
Oh, yes, yeah, you can go into executive session, uh, for this purpose, uh, I don't know if you recall, but when the last time we had a vacancy in the council, right, the council went into executive session, uh, to have a freer discussion, and then they came out of executive session and then took action.
And, and again, you can't take action during the executive session, correct?
Correct, you would have to come out of, if there's any action to be taken, uh, it would be done after you come out of executive session.
But, but the executive session can be used to discuss how to proceed with selection?
Yes.
Yes, either for a election or for an appointment.
I would assume that the, we've had three people come forward.
And those people can be discussed?
And they can be discussed, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Randall probably remembers that.
All right, any other questions or comments, did we get, we got a second, didn't we?
Yes.
To Mike's motion, okay, roll call, please.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fujerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Me.
If not, I'll call for the vote.
Williams?
Yes.
Uh, Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fujerus?
No.
Uh, Powell?
Yes.
Carry six one.
Okay, is that a, that was a resolution, so, uh-
You read the title.
I'll say, I'll say a couple of things, since Rex isn't here, none of the, those, the candidates are here, but, uh, uh, Rex has indicated to me, he, Rex is a long time- Excuse me? I'm sorry, uh, just a few things, because, uh, I, I have had a conversation in the past, few days with Rex. Um, he has indicated to me that, that if, uh, if appointed, he's doing this to, to, uh, just help serve the citizens of Springdale, he has no interest in running at the end of this term in a little over two years, and, uh, uh, and he, uh, he's a long time resident, we think probably well over at least thirty years of, of Ward, Ward two, and so, uh, I just, I just wanted to put that out there and, uh, and congratulate Rex and look forward to working with him. Item fifteen, a discussion on a date for the second committee meeting in September. The, I think, six of our eight council members and me will be in Washington DC for our annual, uh, uh, visit with our congressional delegation. Uh, next, we leave Sunday and get back, uh, Tuesday evening. So, we need a new date for this next committee meeting, I would suggest that everybody check their calendars and see if the twenty-first, which is next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, and that would work. Uh, and if so, then that's what we can plan on, and we could still get the agenda for the, for the committee meeting out uh, by sometime this Friday, so you'd have it.
I'll move with the twenty-first.
Okay, do we need to vote on that, or? Okay, let's just do a voice vote, we have a motion and a second, uh, to move next Monday's committee meeting to next Wednesday. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Do we have any other comments from council members?
Uh, I do. So, you know, Mayor, when we get into the, uh, budget process, we get so many different departments coming, and it just, it seems like the process drags on, and it, it's hard to ask every department head about everything that goes on in their department, and, and that's one of the reasons why I had asked Mike about the possibility of getting more information about our trail system. And that, I guess that's what we're going to do at the committee meeting.
Right.
I, I would like, if, if council agrees, I'd like to a, ask for another one, uh, just because I drive around a lot and I'm thinking about things a lot, and one of the things I think about is our landscaping in the city. And James, I don't really think we've ever really had any kind of report on the landscaping. So, I, I think it might be good, not at this next committee, but the one after that, if we could kind of, because I know we won't have time to get into landscaping during the budget process.
Right.
So, if we maybe could have a report on that as well, at the next-
And if you have specific questions ahead of that, we'll let James know, and we can, we can make sure they, we make sure we get the, those answers that, that you're after. But we can have just a general discussion, certainly about how you do it, what areas we are responsible for, uh, those types of things.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good. We contract out what we contract out for versus what our crews do, that kind of stuff, even mowing, if that, if you want that included. Okay. Good. Any other comments from the council?
Mayor, I, uh, I want to commend, uh, our public works and the council and the city for the, uh, paving program that we've had in our budget. I've driven around on these areas, and they look fantastic. And, uh, thank you, James, uh, and how they have laid it out. It's saving us money that they're not having to mobilize all over the city, but we're taking piece by piece, and we'll get it all, all done. Really appreciate that, and I'm, I'm very happy that the railroad crossing the mountains is getting, getting done. And James, I'd like to, if you have any influence whatsoever, Mayor, uh, the next one would be at a Shady Grove over by the Tyson Feet Plant. If that could be the next one, the, the paving program that we have has really helped that road tremendously. But that crossing is still pretty rough.
We have, uh, we've already brought that one up, but we'll stay on that. The two that, James, you may know some more, but the two we've mainly kind of been talking about next would be, would be either that one or Sunset. Uh, and we can, you know, I, I, I think both of those will be coming pretty soon. I think there were, I think with Shady Grove, and you're real familiar with this, because you, you did the bridge down there, you, when R. Doc did the, uh, part of the bridge program. But I think there was some, uh, there are some drainage concerns that they'd like to try and take care of with that, with Shady Grove also, so, uh, we'll, we'll sure, we'll sure keep pushing on Shady Grove. Okay. Anybody else? City attorney?
No, sir.
I have nothing. We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.